All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, August 24th. Time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We are now going to say the pledge and for a special guest, Township resident and Eagle Scout, Mr. Carter Shuri is going to come lead us in the pledge. Come on up front, Carter.
I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, the living and the dead.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, Trustee Kuzamano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Jollet.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request to move item 5B from Consent Agenda to 9A, New Business, and also a proposed add-on number 12 under Human Resources, a request to change status, status of employee number 1520. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey to approve the amendment as corrected, agenda as corrected. Members, please vote. Amendment is. And then it's amended. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do I have a motion on the bill run? To approve?
For it.
Any discussion on this week's bill run? Hearing none, I have a motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is approval of the previous meeting's minutes from August 10th, 2022, and the closed session minutes from August 10th, 2022. Your motion?
Trustee Kuzamano makes the most to approve the minutes.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Kuzamano, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from August 10th and the closed session meeting minutes from August 10th. Members, please vote. Passes unanimously. Now we are on to public comment. If there is anyone present who wishes to make a public comment on agenda items only, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Anyone who is participating remotely can digitally raise your hand and you will be called upon. I don't see anybody present who wishes to comment on an agenda item. Anyone remotely?
No sir.
Okay, moving on. This is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda items. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven, we have a presentation tonight. This is a resolution to honor Eagle Scout and Macomb Township President Carter and Shuri. Can I get a motion?
So moved. For it.
Clerk Posey, please read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Township of Macomb, County of Macomb, State of Michigan, held in Township Hall in said township on the 24th day of August 2022 at 6:30 PM, the following preamble and resolution were offered. Whereas Carter and Shuri started his scouting career as a Tiger with PAC-17, and while in Cub Scouts, he worked his way through Tiger to Weeblos II rank. He continued on his way to Eagle Scout where he has distinguished himself by achieving 29 merit badges and a Bronze Palm and earned the Eagle Award. Carter has served as a leader in many different roles and has organized community service projects and will be receiving his Eagle Scout Award at his Court of Honor in September of 2022. He is currently a senior at Eisenhower High School and competes with Eisenhower Clay Target Team and the Northern Macomb Eagles Clay Target Team. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Macomb, County of Macomb, Michigan, speaking on behalf of all Macomb Township citizens as follows. That by these presence, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees recognizes the dedication, commitment, and personal sacrifices Carter and Shuri has made to obtain the rank of Eagle Scout, and be it further resolved that the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby commends and publicly extends its congratulations to Carter and Shuri on his elevation to Eagle Scout and further extends its best wishes to Carter and Shuri in his future endeavors. Now therefore, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby proclaims Sunday, September 25th, 2022, Carter and Shuri Day in Macomb Township. Congratulations, Carter.
Before we call the roll, is there any discussion from the board or comments? Okay, hearing none. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Jollet, Treasurer Jollet.
Yes.
Trustee Kuzamano.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. All right, now the fun stuff is over. Time to work. All right, moving on to item eight. We have a request to award the contract for the 2022 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigative program to Rogue Industries in the amount of $325,000 or $325,325. Your motion?
So moved.
Mr. Johnson?
All right, good evening, Board. Just a quick synopsis on this program. This is an annual inspection to inspect and maintain the integrity of our water sewer infrastructure. I'm sorry, the sewer infrastructure. This year, we're planning on doing roughly 30 miles of our sanitary sewer TVing and cleaning. And typically the cycle, the goal is over a 10-year period to circle the entire township and hit every mile of sewer over a 10-year span. So this is just a continual maintenance that we do. And I'm here with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. I did review this before the meeting. I understand was, is the pipe tech used to, was doing this work before?
Yeah.
And through the competitive bidding process, the township's moving in a different direction. Is that correct?
Yes, we did interview this. It was myself, Engineering Department, we sat down, interviewed them, asked a boatload of questions to make sure they could complete the job and we felt comfortable that they, to give them a try and see how they'd work.
And this represents better value for the same goods or services. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Kuzamano. Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to award the contract for the 2022 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigative program to Rogue Industries in the amount of $325,325. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine is a request to approve the proposal from NTH Consultants Limited for the Construction Support Services for the 2022 sanitary sewer system improvements in the amount of $14,900. Your motion?
I'll approve.
Support. Johnson?
All right, so in the past, the township has used NTH Consultants for this support agenda. They are a geotechnical firm specializing in underground utility work, especially with large, deep excavations, which is what our pump station is going to be consisting of in this, in this project. On October 11th of 2019, they prepared to report detailing soil groundwater conditions for the station as well as along the route of the sewer and forest main that's going to be getting installed. The, you know, the analysis indicate a lot of confined aquifers in a proposed invert of a wet well, as well as various soils above the aquifer. So they noted a lot of different anomalies throughout that process. So they focused on a lot of the deep trench stuff. They'll be providing engineering assistance to fishback during the construction to review the contractor's submittals and provide recommendations. Their scope of services will be limited to the review, the temporary earth retention system, de-watering, soil excavation submittals, as well as providing technical assistance should issues arise during construction. And material testing for this project will be formed by PSI, which is another consultant. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Jollet, to approve the proposal from NTH Consultants Limited for the Construction Support Services for the 2022 sanitary sewer system improvements in the amount of $14,900. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9A. This is a request to approve change order number three for the 23-mile road water main replacement from DePonyo Contracting, Inc., which is a net deep increase, $8,045.40. Your motion? So moved.
Second.
Johnson?
As you guys are aware, the market these days is having a hard time finding parts and products. So with this, we're able to find an alternative valve to help us keep the project moving along to stay in conjunction with the 23-mile wide-ing. So this change will allow us to stay on track, be ahead of the road being widened. Not here with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Questions or discussion?
One quick question. When you say the word alternative valves, are these in part with what we use again, or?
Yes, yes, they are.
They meet all our specs that?
Yes, our team, we, it'll, it'll, the valves that we'll be getting will have, be able to have replacement parts for them so we can, we can fix them in the future. Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the change order number three for the 23-mile road water main replacement to DePonyo Contracting. A net increase in the amount of $8,045.40. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10, is a request to approve the alter grade for Walden Park.
So moved. Support.
Antiflan?
Chair and Board members, the engineering plan review for this particular project has gotten to a point where we're very close to being planned. There are a few things that are still, need to be taken care of with some of the outside agencies. So to try and stay ahead of the winter weather that's coming, the developer is requesting that they be allowed to start doing some of the earthwork ahead of time. The only process that we have right now for us to allow them to do that would be through an alter grade approval by the Township Board. So we have reviewed the request that they have made. It seems to be in line with the plans they have into us for review. Happened that there will be only minor changes that may come up during the rest of the plan interview process and we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Antiflan. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the alter grade for Walden Park. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, we have a request to hire a plumbing inspector. Have a motion?
So moved.
For it.
Tobacco?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I'm requesting authorization to extend an offer of employment to Richard Burrell for the plumbing inspector position. This position was posted in compliance with the MATE CBA agreement. HR received four applications. We interviewed all four. The interview team consisted of myself and Joe Maples and we are recommending, like I said, Richard Burrell to the position of plumbing inspector with the proof its contingent upon successful completion of all post offer, offer requirements. And we're looking at effective data on or after September 6th of this year, of course. It says a budgeted, budgeted position. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. Any questions or discussion? I don't know, I have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Trustee Nevers, air Mr. Richard Burrell as our new plumbing inspector. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 12, which is an add-on, is a request to change the status for employee 1520. Right number, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Attorney Kuzamano supports. Did you second?
Trustee Kuzamano.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Kuzamano, who's also an attorney. Seconds the motion.
Yeah, well, Attorney Kuzamano support them. Mr. Tobacco?
Mr. Supervisor and Board members, at the last Board of Trustee meetings held on August 10th, 2022, the Board authorized a promotion of the full-time elections coordinator to the position of election supervisor due to a resignation. HR then posted for that position, a full-time elections coordinator. According to the collective CBA with MATE, we had one internal candidate who was currently a part-time elections coordinator and her name is Tracy Papke. She met all the qualifications and has been in this position for quite some time. Myself and Clerk Posey are recommending her for this position. This is a budgeted position and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. Any questions or discussion from the board? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee. Who approve the change of status from full, part-time to full-time, Tracy Papke. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 13, is a request to approve and then the assessment center invoice. Do I have a motion?
So moved. For it.
Tobacco?
The Supervisor and Board members, based on the CBA between the Township and the IAFF Local 5023, all qualified candidates who submit a written application for a promotional opportunity shall receive an oral and/or written test in 30 days of the posting. Test results factor into the decision-making process for this hire promotion. Emco is the only firm in Michigan that provides the necessary services for this testing. Based on the number of applicants, five, I believe, applicants, that require testing, the cost of the services exceeded the amount. As a result, the board approval is being requested at this time. Thank you for, you know, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. Any questions or discussion?
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
The write-up indicates the contract is being awarded pursuant to purchasing policy 3.1. Is it more properly stated that it's the exception to the competitive bidding process, which is that 4.1E sole source procurement? That's my question. Is it, is this a sole provide source and that's the reason why it's not being competitively bid? I don't know if you can answer that or?
I mean, like I said earlier, the, the only testing assessment center was in Michigan. So we did look into it further. I think the other one, I believe, Chief, I don't know, I think it was in Illinois. We did some research and they were quite more expensive.
They were more expensive?
Correct.
Oh, I mean, for practical purposes, it's sole sourced because it's the only one that is in a reasonable distance from the township in order to do the work.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify.
Trustee Kuzamano. Any other questions or discussion?
I, I had a question. What type of testing is this for $9,000? Like, I'm assuming it's not just a written examiner?
No, no, it's quite intense. So it's about a six-hour test. There's in-basket testing. There's all kind of interview questions. At the end, I had to do an oral presentation in front of a committee and there was five candidates and this is for the captain position. So it take, took, I think around six hours.
And that's per applicant?
Yes.
That's 30 hours of testing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman, one comment. I think we'll have a pretty good idea of their bona fides in their their knowledge of the area after all that testing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
More questions? And there's a motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the assessment center invoice. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 14, we have a request to approve an engagement with Emco, Inc. Your motion?
So moved. For it.
Yeah, Mr. Tobacco?
The Supervisor and Board members, so again, based on the CBA with the Township and IAFF, qualified candidates who submit a written application for promotional opportunity, they'll receive an oral-written test within 30 days of the closing of the posting. So this is for our sergeants coming up. There were six candidates. This testing will be done on September 20th and 21st. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobacco. Any questions?
I just had one more question on that. We know, and you may not know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but how much do we spend on this kind of testing in a, in a year usually? I mean, is this?
This is very rare. I don't, I don't think we've promoted in quite some time. I mean, speak better of that, but it's been a while since we promoted anyone.
Okay.
And this was due to the CBA, our agreement with the CBA.
Sure.
IFF.
I'll, I'll expand on it. So when we signed the CBA, we allowed for a number of positions that hadn't been filled in the past. So specifically the three captain positions. Previous, it's six sergeants, they were brought up to lieutenant status. Some of them are the ones testing for captain and then the three sergeant positions that they vacated are now, or the six sergeant positions that they vacated, we are filling three of, three sergeant positions. So three sergeants that are coming up.
Just $20,000 for testing and only one option to go to, just?
It's, it's rare that, you know, normally there'd be one position and a few couple of candidates. But this is because of the way we're sort of reorganizing and adding staff. We're doing a lot all at once.
And then after this assessment, we also interview them here.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Trustee Oliver, to improve the engagement with Emco, Inc. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, is a request to approve the rezoning from agricultural to residential. This is for parcel ID 0821100016 and it's located on the south side of 23-mile, one-quarter mile east of Romeo Plank. Your motion?
So moved. For it.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, this is a request to rezone from agriculture to residential, one family to just under 20-acre piece of property south of 23-mile, just east of Romeo Plank, as you mentioned. Some of you may know where the Oxford Academy is, is kind of back behind that. This did go through department review. Everyone recommended approval there and it went through Planning Commission and it was recommended for approval with unanimous consent and it does match the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the rezoning agricultural to residential or the permanent parcel ID 0821100016. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 16, is a request to approve the extension of time for the preliminary site plan or the preliminary plan for the Penzine Estates on parcel ID 080820009. This is located on the south side of 25-mile road, one-quarter mile east of Romeo Plank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Again, as you mentioned, just south of 25-mile east of Romeo Plank, kind of between the Randazzo Tree Nursery and Penzine Farms that currently exists. This is a site plan, preliminary plan that was approved in 2020 and, and they've been going through the engineering process and they are near the end of their timeframe. So they're seeking an extension of time on that plan. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission as well as internal departments.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the extension of time for the preliminary plan for Penzine Estates. Members, please vote. And passes unanimously. Moving on to item 17, is a request to award the contract for the fiscal year 2021 CBD, CBBG ADA Ramp Program to JSS Macomb in the amount of $199,513.61. Members, please, your motion?
So moved.
For it.
Let's vote before I hear a motion. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is for fiscal year 2021. This is through the block grant money. It was approved, the application was approved by the board. We did receive that award. So we are now seeking to get the approval to award the, the actual contract work to JSS Macomb. What was anticipated was $242,750, of which $92,750 would be from the township. $150,000 was the, the block grant award. The actual bid came in $43,236.39 lower than the estimate. So we're significantly lower and that will lower what the township's portion is. We get the full $150,000 from a block grant still, so.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Box. Any discussion on the black, block grant award?
Just a quick question. What is the, what will, what's the anticipated cost then to the township after the award is, the grant is provided?
Neighborhood of $49,000?
Okay. Project is replanting the existing ramps in those sidewalks that are
Correct.
not compliant with federal guidelines? Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to award the contract for the CBDG ADA Ramp Program to JSS Macomb in the amount of $191,513.61. Members, please vote. Motion passes six to one with Treasurer Jollet voting no. Moving on to item 18, is a request to adopt an ordinance amendment to Chapter 6, Article 4 for the self-service gas stations, Section 6-75. Your motion?
So moved.
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approvals this evening to amend Township ordinance, specifically Chapter 6, Article 4, Self-Service Gas Stations, Section 6-75, to allow for the removal of fixed pipe dry chemical extinguishing systems. In 1988, the Board approved language based on the fire code that was in effect at that time that required all self-service gas stations within the township to install a fixed tri-pipe chemical extinguishing system above each gas pump. In the event of a fire at or near the pump, the dry chemical system would activate and extinguish the fire. The current fire code that has been adopted no longer requires these systems and allows for their removal. We've had several gas station owners contact us inquiring about removal. and uh, we've been informed that the systems are antiquated and parts are no longer available to keep the systems operational. We've worked with planning department and legal counsel to address the issue, and I'm recommending the adoption of the attached resolution that will allow for the proper removal of the systems. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, G.
Any questions or discussion?
I had a question. Does the fire code allow for or require something else be put in its place, or it's no longer necessary?
No, it's uh, no longer necessary with the new technology that's in the pumps, uh, the emergency uh, shut offs, the systems that weren't available in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, we have quite a few of the sister, the stations that have these systems in place that can't uh, get parts. They're non-operational. Uh, about a month ago, we had one gas station that discharged for no reason, uh, and did extensive damage. Two vehicles that were there, customers had pulled up to get gas and uh, the system activated without any reason or warning. Nobody touched it. Nobody did anything. They just blew apart, and so we, it resulted in two damages, two vehicles with extensive damage. And so we're requesting that they be allowed to remove the systems completely, but properly.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Lucino.
Just follow up on that.
Yeah.
So when they come in for requests, then we assign somebody to make sure everything's done the way.
Yeah, the, there's an application that I included with the packet that they would complete, and then it would go to the fire inspector, and then uh, the fire inspector, building department, mechanical, electrical, all those inspections and departments will be necessary for the removal uh, for the system. Once that's done, then all the approvals will be given, and uh, they'll be finished out and complete.
Then they'll be back in compliance because of the new pumps.
Correct.
Thank you.
Trustee Oliver. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It's my understanding that the old antiquated technology is being removed because of upgrades to the technology of shutting the pumps off. Your understanding, will there be inspections to make sure that all the pumps have been upgraded with those shut off uh, features?
It's correct. It, it'll be part of the annual inspections that are done at the service stations to make sure they're within the current twenty fifteen international fire code.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee, wow. Any other questions? There are none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers, to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter six, article four, self-service gas station, section six dash seven five. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nineteen is a request to approve the purchase of sports flooring and hoop systems from McComb Corners Park.
So move.
Port. Carl. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase sports flooring and four hoop systems from McComb Corners Park. This will be used for the repurposing of the inline skating rink. Flooring will be used for two pickleball courts, and the hoop system will be used for two future basketball courts. This is the same flooring that was installed at Waldenberg Park for the basketball courts a few weeks back. This time, we're recommending we purchase the item from Superior Sports Unlimited Incorporated for total cost of forty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Superior Sports is a source well provider. I've included the quote and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Carl.
Here, just a question. This is part of the one million dollars that we've set aside to improve our existing parks.
Feel my thunder. That's what I was gonna say.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes.
How long until I'm up and running the pickleball?
Uh, it's four to six weeks. It'll only take one day to install it. You gotta order it and get it in.
Good. So we'll be able to seasonally use it?
We'll be able to use it this season.
Great. Thank you.
First, first game you can play it. First game you can play.
I don't, Dan.
Bad knee.
Beat that. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one. You're happy so far with the performance at Waldenberg as far as how it's holding up?
Yes, holding up very nice.
Good.
Getting a lot of use.
Good. Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? A motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucino, to approve the you made the motion. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucino, to approve the purchase of sports flooring and hoop systems from McComb Corners Park. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
So. And our last item of the evening is a request to adopt and publish the McComb Township Ordinance to amend chapter twelve offenses, division three, youth tobacco ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Trustee Cruzma supports the motion.
Tomlinson, can I ask you to address this, please?
I will. Uh, thank you, uh, chairman and board members. So the Youth Tobacco Act was recently by the legislature, which provides for the increase in definition of what a minor was, and it is uh, increased from eighteen to twenty-one. That prohibits uh, the utilization of tobacco and vapor products. Uh, the second facet of that was the amendment to the definition include other vapor products or other tobacco products. And that's, but it's been incorporated in the ordinance to comply with that act. That's the sole purpose of the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Any questions or discussion?
Just a brief statement, if I may. I will, I'll be voting on the item because I if, if somebody's old enough to defend our country and they're old enough to vote for our leadership, I think they should be old enough to make their own decisions with regard to tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I under, through the chair question, the general counsel just brings us compliant with state laws that.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I was reading one provision, if the individual appears to be under twenty-seven years of age, examining a government issued photographic identification that establishes the individual is at least twenty-one years of age. I mean, you're understanding, how does someone appear to be under twenty-seven years of age?
No idea. But that's what the
Leave it. Give it to the
If any question for someone that, an individual may be under the age of twenty-one, they should be asking for ID.
Okay, so the legislature is going to leave that up to the courts to interpret, right?
I would agree with you, sir.
Maybe a jury question. All right, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cruzma.
Yeah, I got a question also for Mr. Tomlinson. If we were to leave it at eighteen, rather than twenty-one, which law would supersede, if, you know?
So there, there's a couple things. Number one is that your sheriff deputies have authority both to cite someone under state law and or ordinance law. So if they, if someone's violating under twenty-one, they'd have to do it under state law, okay? If at eighteen. It could potentially lead to confusion with our deputies because they're deputized in the McComb County completely. And uh, given that state law says twenty-one, and if our ordinance said eighteen, there could be some confusion as to how that's going to be handled. Is it permissible? Yes. And the state law pretty much provides here we, we're looking for twenty-one and under. For instance, you could not say twenty-four and under because you're beyond what's permitted and authorized by state law. Can you keep it at eighteen? That's within your prerogative. However, I can see it leading to a great deal of confusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a comment and a question for general counsel through the chair. My understanding from reading some case law that the deputies and peace officers are charged with knowledge of laws that are in effect at the time. Is that part of the statement that you made that there could be some confusion?
The reason why I say there could be confusion is because they may not so generally what happens is in McComb Township, our deputies are citing people under our ordinances, and they're going to presume that they're in performance of state law. If we're not in performance of state law, and they cite him with an ordinance violation under, being under twenty-one, yet our ordinance says eighteen, that case is going to have to be dismissed because they don't have the authority to, to charge him under, under the order. Whereas if they charge him under state law, they'd be fined. There, there's, therein lies where the problem is as far as confusion versus twenty-one. Ordinance being different than state law. Do they have the authority to cite him under state law? Absolutely. That doesn't change. However, generally, I think our deputies are looking at local ordinance violations for ordinance violations, and they're going to presume many of them will presume, and maybe not, but that it's under twenty-one versus under eighteen.
And what are other municipalities doing in this area through the chair?
Every one of them.
Pardon me?
Every one of mine. Clinton Township, Roseville, New Baltimore, and I can only speak to my, I don't know about the other ones, but I, Baltimore, uh, I believe Clinton Township's in the process of it, Roseville, um.
Close point ones. I do my research. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's not required that we be complicit with the state. No. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have questions to general counsel. So if uh, somebody was to call and report an establishment uh, that was selling to what they believe to be minors
Time wise.
under twenty-one.
Thank you, trustee.
Would our sheriff deputies then enforce that? If we kept the set eighteen?
Oh, if you kept it at eighteen, no. They could only enforce it under eighteen. Uh, they could do it under state law and write a ticket under state law. But again, any result of that sentence or fines and costs, that would be handled through the state process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Cruzmano, to adopt and publish a McComb Township ordinance to amend chapter twelve offenses, division three, youth tobacco ordinance. Members, please vote. Motion passes four to three with trustees Lucino, Nevers, and Treasurer Gillette voting no. And with that, that brings us to our public comment of the evening. If anyone wishes to make public comment, this is on non-agenda items, and make your way to the microphone on the right hand side of the room. Or digitally raise your hand and you will be called upon. And I don't see anybody present, anybody online? Okay, that, we're going to move on from public comment, and we will move on to board comments. Trustee Lucino.
Just uh, some quick congratulations to our Eagle Scout, Carter Sherry, uh, Mr. Burrell, uh, the new plumbing inspector. Um, I personally have known Rick Burrell for about twenty-five years or so. He's done men, a lot of work at my business, at my house, uh, my parents' house, whole family. So great guy. I think he's a great hire for the township. Um, and also congratulations to Ms. Poppy. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Nevers.
Well, the same, I'd like to congratulate the new plumbing inspector, Rick Burrell. Our Eagle Scout, who's not here at the moment, but that's a
And to trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing. Congrats to our employees. Uh, the Eagle Scout, a lot of work to, to getting there. We, we see again, two minutes of it, but you know, that, that child spent a lot of days with him and his family, so pretty impressive. The other thing I want to uh, talk about is uh, we all know we had a water, a water situation, and uh, to me, it could have been a lot worse. I think everyone involved in our township and a lot of other communities stepped up and stepped in and kept McComb Township out of a long-term boiling water. We're in a short-term boiling water, but uh, it, it, it just goes to show the communications and people working together can get stuff done. So I want to thank the water department and all their efforts and keep up top of it, and that's about it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Cruzmano.
I would just like to add to that. A lot of these infrastructure issues, water, sewer, storm drains, we take it all for granted. It's because of the work of the of the, the public sector in the county and also in the township that that all takes place. And the fact that we're not aware of a problem means that and it's invisible to us, we just take it for granted. I want to just state that I appreciate the hard work of all the individuals involved in that process, including at the county and also in the township. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cruzmano. Treasurer Gillette.
College has said it all, so I'll pass.
Okay, Clerk Posey.
I mirror a lot of things that my colleagues said. Um, I want to extend my personal congratulations to Tracy Papke on her promotion. Um, she deserved it. She's worked hard to get there, so we are glad to have her and happy to have her full-time. Also, I just wanted to commend the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, we just, um, as a group, the vision for our parks moving forward, and we specifically set aside money to um, get it there. And I went to Waldenberg Park uh, last night in the evening. It was a beautiful evening, and I was curious because there were so many cars there, and the road is closed right now. So I went to see what was going on, and what was going on was our swing sets were full, our new swing sets were full of kids. The basketball court was full of kids playing basketball. The uh, the gymnasium was full, the whole park was filled with our residents enjoying it. So great job at um, fulfilling our vision. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I too would like to congratulate Mr. Burrell and Ms. Papke on their positions. I do want to remind everybody that there's a watering ban still in effect in the township. Um, that ban will remain in effect until the Great Lakes Water Authority fully repaired the uh, ten-foot water main up in Port Huron, and the water's been tested, and they give, they all clear for the start turning the valves and releasing that water pressure back into our system. I do want to congratulate the entire DPW team for uh, keeping me informed. You know, I got an early call that morning from Mr. Johnson, and I, along with uh, my team, were able to get messages out to the public uh, literally hours and hours before any official word was coming out through the media or Great Lakes Water Authority. So uh, I encourage everyone to follow, you know, the township website through our notify me uh, or follow our social media pages. We're, we're able to turn the information around fairly quickly, and everything we put out was um, accurate and timely, and I appreciate that, and I, residents appreciate it. We will also be just as diligent about letting everybody know when the irrigation ban has been lifted.
We do that over the website or?
All the, all the, all the medium that we have available to us.
You should sign up for the notify me. Oh, I will do that. Now, how would residents sign up for that notify?
You go to the website, and there's a little red tab that says, sign up and notify me.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Help with your computer later. We have an IT guy starting next Monday. I look forward to meeting him. Thank you.
You're welcome. On with that, the last thing is, uh, please remember that Monday, September fifth is Labor Day, and township offices will be closed. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
The discussion on the motion. There are none. Motion.
Like thinking.
Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. During the meeting, members, please vote.
At what time is the mo, meeting adjourned, Mr. Chair? We vote, so I'll let you know.
Oh. So it was Treasurer Gillette that made the motion, right?
I did make the motion. This for the
I gave your support.
You supported. You supported it.
That's why I didn't hear it. Okay, just checking.
Roll call.
I'm gonna abstain.
Nobody likes you. Oh, what the time it is? We don't. Meeting.
Vote. The computer's off.
I, I shut off my computer.
Yeah, I got so excited to leave this meeting this manually, our voting. Trustee Nevers, how are you voting on the motion?
I am voting in the affirmative.
Okay, can we record that? Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.